We'll call this morning's meeting to order. First thing is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. With that, we would like to recognize the Moritz Freese. They made a donation of $150 to the Clay County Sheriff's Office K-9 program. Appreciate the Moritz Freese for doing that, the work that was done over there. Our citizens to be heard. Is there any citizens that need to want to speak? The Commissioner at this time? Steve, did you get any notices?
I did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the payment of the bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Okay, and then item number two, request to approve the Clay County 2023 budget. Got Commissioner, sorry, Laurie. Steve, are you taking that one?
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. This past Tuesday evening, this commission held a truth in taxation meeting with the information to share with the public and again with the board on what the proposed 2023 budget would look like. It also provided this board the opportunity to ask additional questions and give directives leading into today. It also provided our citizens an opportunity to provide feedback on the proposed budget. The truth in taxation was really a culmination of a budget process that started back in May with our department heads developing the budgets, presenting them first to administration and then this commission. The commission provided direction throughout the budget process. The initial budget came in right around 10%, which told us to go do some work. And ultimately, after receiving your feedback, a preliminary levy was approved at 3.99%. At the end of our truth in taxation meeting this past week, you provided Ms. Johnson the directive to bring forward a budget for consideration this week. And so this morning, we have two action items for you to consider. Number one, the overall budget with expenditures this year of $105,150,569. And second, Resolution 2022-38, which establishes a levy, a dollar amount that will be asking our citizens to provide, which is $40,539,278. With that, I would yield for any questions, final questions from the board. And if the commission were to support these two action items, we would be looking for two separate motions.
Okay. Any questions? No, we need, first things to approve the budget, I think, for the $1,500,000. Okay.
Move for approval of the stated amount.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, and second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any discussion? You got it.
I'm not going to.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one passes. Now we need to vote on the resolution.
Move for approval of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Pass that resolution. All right. Let's see, we got... You taking the next one on the flood? Yes, the Metro Flood Diversion Authority Planning Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner. This past fall, Executive Director Joel Paulson from the Fargo-Moritz Metro Diversion Authority came forward and chaired some potential governance and organizational structures changes that they'd been reviewing for the last year. Out of that review came a planning committee, which would be, again, providing policy goals and objectives for the authority moving forward. As you recall, the original JPA, there were four different committees, the agricultural committee, the lands committee, the public outreach, and the finance. Through this process, the agricultural and the public outreach would be enveloped into the planning commission, our planning committee, excuse me. Much of the work in those two areas has been completed. The finance committee would stay intact, and the lands committee would remain but only would meet in the event that there were any policy-related issues. Since Mr. Paulson presented before this board, they did, the diversion authority board did approve the resolution, which is attached. As a part of that, Clay County would be allowed to have one representative from the diversion authority board to sit in on the planning and commission. And so with that, I would yield for your motion to move forward.
Thank you, Steve. Questions, Commissioner Campbell?
Just another little brief history on this. So the diversion authority, a while back, had hired Dr. Schatz to help navigate the next steps moving forward. And there used to be an executive committee that was, that would meet and discuss things that were coming up. And that now has been, is being replaced by this committee as well. It's, it's the final outcome of a long process that all members of the diversion authority were in retreats that came to conclusion that this was the right way to go.
Okay. Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we designate Commissioner Campbell as a representative under Metro Flood Diversion Authority Planning Committee.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Commissioner Campbell to the planning commission, or planning committee? Second. Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion?
I've got a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Do they need, what, do they form another committee? Do...
Yeah, so...
I'm just wondering whether these committee members, are they going to be more knowledgeable on the diversion than what the diversion people are? Or are they going to make decisions? What type of decisions?
Well, it, I think, I think a lot of what they're going to be doing might be more towards policy. And then, as things come up that are not currently under design, it's, this planning commission is going to work very slimder to a Clay County Planning Commission type of a thing, where you've got a set of rules, and if they want to go outside of those rules, it will come before this committee.
All right, okay. I was just wondering whether this, this committee is going to be more knowledgeable than the people that are already working for the diversion and stuff?
Well, it, so the, I mean, the, this committee will be current board, diversion authority board members.
Oh, okay, very good, okay.
All of them, all of them will be.
And they're dissolving two committees.
All right.
So it's not, it's not really building something on top of it. They've taken out some things that are not necessary on a regular basis. And they're putting an executive committee in there simply to help identify policy issues.
It's just looked like a lot of committees already in diversion and stuff, so, very good. Thank you for explaining that.
My only struggle, and I understand it's laid out, but my only struggle is the new layout really eliminates a lot of representatives from different areas. And I appreciate that it says in there, the caveat, that it needs to be a diversion authority board member. I think that makes sense. You've represented us well on that. But I, you know, when it, when it's replacing a lands committee, there were individuals on those committees that are not going to have the ability to be on it.
It's not replacing the lands committee.
You just said it absolved.
The lands committee will meet only if there's a policy issue specifically to the land. So they'll still maintain lands, but it won't meet on a regular basis like it has been.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. As a clarification, that would then go into Commissioner Campbell's portfolio with per diem included as well. Do we need to vote separately on that, since that wasn't included?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that this be included in Commissioner Campbell's portfolio with per diem.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Ebinger, a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. And I do have to apologize for being late today, but it seems like the day after the city of Morehead has federally awarded almost $27 million to mitigate our train issue, I seem to have caught two trains on the way here. So in celebration of that future funding, I took one for the team. So, thank you, Commissioner Gross, for taking over in my absence. The next piece today is number four, the resolution to approve funding for community supervision.
Hey, look at that for timing.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. As you recall, last week, Commissioner Ebinger did mention this as something that was going to be potentially brought forward. The Association of Minnesota Counties, in both 2022 and now in 2023, is identified, identified as one of their major priorities of looking at the formula that is utilized for probationary services in Minnesota. Currently, there are three different, different ways that is provided in the communities throughout the state. And there's a different funding mechanism for each different types. Janelle Chaney from the Minnesota Department Corrections, our district supervisor of field services here today, and she maybe can provide a little bit of insight into how those three different, three different services operate.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you. Yes, as Steve had indicated, there are three delivery systems in Minnesota. We have one that is through the Department of Corrections, and that's the model that Clay County uses. We, State of Minnesota covers the felony level offenses, and then Clay County contracts with the State of Minnesota to cover the gross misdemeanor, misdemeanor, and juvenile caseload in our contract office here in Clay County. Every year, there's a bill back. It should be at 50%, but the state doesn't, legislator, we haven't gotten enough funds. And so that bill back is not at 50%. It's typically at that 26%, so kind of shortchanging counties. One of the other delivery systems is where it's a DOC and a CPO, a county probation office. That type of model is in our, like, 8th Judicial District, Wilkin County is similar to that, where they have a totally separate Department of Corrections office that covers all the felony caseloads, and then they have a completely separate county probation office that has a director or a supervisor and their own staff, and they fund that specifically through the county. They also have the ability to recoup 50%, but again, where there's not enough funding through the state. And so they're, they're also at that 26% bill back. But typically, we're going to see some of those counties look to their residents, increasing taxes. They, they look to use their county budget more so to support probation. And I'll talk a little bit about that impact as well in a minute. And then we have Community Corrections Act, which is where a county supervises all levels, and they have the ability to bill back as well. An example of that would be tri-county community corrections. They have Polk, Norman, and Red Lake County. They do follow, we coordinate a lot of things together across the state, but they operate and supervise all levels of individuals that are on community supervision. And so that's kind of the three delivery systems. When we have three delivery systems and funding is sort of out of whack, we end up having different services provided to clients across the state of Minnesota. And so supervision within Clay County doesn't look the same as Roseau, Minnesota, or Hennepin, Minnesota. And so we did have an organization come in and kind of look at what's being done across the state of Minnesota, and they're really trying to establish some equity, not only in delivery of services, but also funding. And so they are, there was, the AMC organization got a work group together, and they are approaching legislature, requesting a substantial amount of funds to, I would say, bring us up to speed with what's going on in our communities across the state of Minnesota, and establish some equity across the board. The group, the work group is consisted of both, or all, Department of Corrections, community probation offices, and the CCA, the Community Corrections Act organization. So all three delivery systems are on board, trying to come to a common goal of appropriate funding for those that are on supervision in the community. We've really seen an increase in crime, assault of crime. You know, we're really looking at what is evidence-based practice, what reduces recidivism, and how can we affect change if we don't have the resources to do that? So really asking legislature to be mindful of allocating the appropriate amount of funding so that it doesn't fall upon the counties, because the state should be able to offer back that at least 50%.
I think through that process, one of the things that they discovered was Minnesota has fallen as far as funding to the bottom of the entire United States. And so as far as caseloads and the things that Janelle talked about, it's, it's become challenging for them to effectively do, do their job in their supervision.
Correct. We are sixth in the nation. Thank you.
All right.
So to that point, to the AMC group that, that came forward to, to study this issue, AMC now has come forward with a resolution requesting that all 87 counties, all 87 boards adopt this resolution in support of, of the changing of formula, formula in the upcoming legislative session. If that, I'd yield for any questions.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, I just want to put some context on this. I'm on the Public Safety Committee with AMC, and this was one of our priorities last year. It never got out of legislation. And it's not only a priority of the Public Safety Committee, but of the AMC itself this time. We incarcerate, and you guys alluded to the increase in crime, we incarcerate people for violent crimes and serious crimes, but even those individuals will be going through community supervision when they come out. I think incarceration, after 40 years of doing this and teaching it at a college level, I'm comfortable in saying that incarceration is not the answer. In a lot of instances, some people need to be in jail, a lot of them don't. And we have seriously underfunded our community supervision in this state. And we have three systems. Some of them work fairly well, some of them don't. And there's no consistency, and there's really no way to hold, hold those systems accountable for effectiveness. There's not a standard that's out there. And the counties absorb too much of the cost on this. So I think we need to be part of this movement to try and get some unified response across the county, or across the state, from all counties on this, have a consistent practice that applies to everybody, and allow us the opportunity to give the people, when they either get out of incarceration or in lieu of incarceration, give them a system that's supportive enough to keep them from reoffending. That's the objective on this. I mean, ultimately, it's not just procedure, it's effectiveness. And if people who get arrested and get prosecuted and get convicted, and if they can be rehabilitated within their own community, that's the goal. And right now, we're going three different directions. So I think it's important that we be supportive of this.
There was a resolution included in the packet. This is definitely, I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Ebinger. He did update us on this even before the AMC conference. This is something that you've been talking about. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, maybe a question for Commissioner Ebinger. I, sometimes, when there's a request for a new formula at the state of Minnesota, I get a little bit nervous. And I, and I think, I can't think more than to how transportation formulas work, that they're not always the greatest for rural Minnesota. And so having said that, I, I'm, you know, if, if we're talking about formulas that, that bring the state's share of each county's financial responsibilities back to something similar to what it used to be, then I think that's a great thing. And I guess I'm not sure, when you, when we're talking a change in formula, what are, what are they talking about?
Going with one consistent formula as opposed to three. And I, you know, I've been here 16 years, but historically, I can't address, I don't know when there was a divergence in where counties had three different systems. So I don't know if we can say the good old days worked well or not. For some reason, we ended up with three different ways to approach this. We've got the approach right now that the Department of Corrections handles our gross misdemeanors and other. And I, again, I'm assuming felonies are handled by DOC across the state. That's a unified response there. But the cost of gross misdemeanors and other community supervision activities is falling on the counties in a, in a, really, an unfair amount. If we get this through, it's going to give the DOC impetus not just to take all the funding they need for incarceration and then take what's left and dole it out for community supervision. Community supervision is increasing, incarceration is decreasing, and the funding needs to be reformulated.
I guess the, I support the resolution. I support that all 87 counties should share a goal. I, you know, I think the ultimate new formula, you know, to me, the devil is still in the details. And, and as long as this doesn't become a fight of metro versus rural dollars, and I'm hoping that's not going to be the case here. But, you know, you being on the, the Public Safety Policy Committee meeting, you'll be sure to, I'm sure, watch that, monitor that. And I, I think your vice chair this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I, I support the resolution.
Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Gross?
Where did the 50% come from? You know, you say we're only getting 26%. Who's, who said that we should get 50%?
It's in statute.
So they don't, they're not following the statute then, or?
Because the state doesn't allocate enough funding to cover that. So it's a situation where the state makes the rule and then doesn't fund the rule that they create. And so all three delivery systems are prorated. And I think to speak to the conversation between Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Ebinger is, we, the Department of Corrections keeps a pretty lean caseload. We look at early discharging. We really focus on those that should be supervised, whereas in other delivery systems or settings, they'll maintain supervision of minimum risk. They'll keep those as a caseload, and so those numbers weigh in to staffing needs and those kind of things. And so that's kind of where you're seeing the discrepancy of, well, we're supervising the higher risk, and we are having higher contact, but in some of the other communities, they're having less contact. They're supervising minimum-risk offenders who otherwise could be discharged, but it looks like they have a caseload. Well, they do have a caseload, but it's minimum risk. So if they're giving attention to that, they want staff for that caseload, and so they have higher staffing. So the Department of Corrections, we haven't hired staff in 20 years. So we haven't come to the board to say, can we have additional positions? The Department of Corrections has operated very lean. We've gotten creative. We've specialized caseloads. We really do look to see who can we discharge that has been amenable to supervision and close those files earlier, those kind of things. Whereas in some other areas, here's an example. If we, if we get a transfer of supervision into our office from another community, we sit down with the individual, and they're shocked to find out that in their other community, they had to call in every three months and report by phone, whereas they come to Clay County, we're, we're asking them to come see an agent face-to-face every two weeks. And so they're like, why there did I get to report by phone, but here I have to report face-to-face? And it starts with our risk level assessment. Myself and Mike Rapp are now on a committee to develop a statewide assessment tool that is used by all delivery systems, so that we have consistency with what level of supervision an individual should be at, and how that looks across the state of Minnesota. So really, there's just been a manipulation with lack of funding and how can we meet the needs in the counties with what we have.
So is this resolution going to make them do the 50%? Or, I mean, do they have to follow it then, or?
They don't have to follow it. There is a request for $50 million going before the legislature. I believe that there is a strong argument. We've had multiple changes in the last probably three years. Sentencing guidelines changed their calculation, and so they reduced through, through Minnesota sentencing guidelines. They put a cap on anyone on supervision at five years. They changed the sentencing guidelines, what the requirement is for in custody. And so they've recognized they don't, they're looking at not incarcerating for longer periods of time, and that means all of those individuals will be in the community under supervision. And so they're increasing the number of individuals in communities, knowing that they need to put resources in the community. And I do know, and I think Commissioner Ebinger spoke to this, the Department of Corrections in their funding, some of it is allocated to the institutions, and then some of it is allocated to field services, which is community supervision. During COVID-19, they released a significant population out into the community, given COVID-19 within the facilities. Those individuals came out in the community, and our director did look to take some funding from the institutions and put it towards field services to support community supervision. But they're not allowed to do that, and so they're looking at changing that language as well, that they can shift funding from the institutions to field services to better meet the needs within corrections across the state.
I was just concerned, I mean, if they're not following the statutes now, is this going to make them follow the statutes, or what happens if they don't follow it, so?
Right. I, I believe that the intent is to get better. I believe the intent is to recognize that we're not able to meet that, that they did, you know, it is in statute that we are supposed to be providing that 50% and recognizing that it has not been attainable for many, many, many years, and that we need to work towards that. So I believe it will be based on what is decided by the legislature.
Having resolutions passed by all 87 counties really does send a strong message, and it allows legislators to see where there's discrepancies, similar to a lot of the other things that we advocate year-round. We just passed a budget that had a lot of unfounded mandates in it, and that's just the nature of sometimes what happens in St. Paul. So I'm hopeful that there can be any agreement in St. Paul this, this year, and then maybe this would be included as well.
Madam Chair, I move Resolution 2022-39.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-39 from Commissioner Campbell, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you, Janelle.
Thank you.
Steve.
[clears throat] Thank you. You're welcome.
He was here.
Yep, that was my plan. Okay, he's not quite here yet. Dan, you want to come up?
Yes.
I just, oh, do you mind? Sorry, okay. Justin. Justin, we are still early on the bid opening. Can we do number six first?
So I do actually, bid was at nine.
Okay.
So I can do that one first?
We can, okay. So number five today is a bid opening for SP 1401-191 and SAP 014-619-21.
Yes, so we did receive one bid. It is Celine Brothers. They do have a complete bid and a bid bond in the amount of 5%. And their bid is $551,783.00.
And that was a virtual?
Yep, electronic.
And you had no other correspondence on this one?
No.
And your engineer's estimate, which was $502,253, when was that bid engineer estimate completed?
So that engineer's estimate was done when we received state funding, which would have been roughly 18 months ago.
Oh.
But it is, so I do think this is a good bid. So it is a split project between MnDOT, the city of Glendon, and Clay County.
Okay.
So I would recommend contingent approval upon approval from MnDOT and the city of Glendon. The additional cost to the county would be about $25,000, and that would be covered under state aid municipal, which, at the end of the five-year plan that I did revise a couple months ago, we are still in the positive on state aid municipal.
Questions from the board?
I would, I would move the contingent on Glendon and the state also accepting the bid.
We have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to accept the bid that was proposed, contingent of review. Second, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion?
Let's see, as far as timeline, you got down soon. I think it's going to be done this summer, or?
Yep, so in the bid, it's actually starting, they have to start after school is released, which I think is sometime in June. So we worked with the school district on that. And then it has to be completed a week before school is back in session.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you. Your next item is six, the approval of the MnDOT contract number 1052148 and the supporting resolution.
Yes, so every five years, MnDOT updates the delegated contract project agreements. So what this does is it allows MnDOT to receive federal funds on our behalf and distribute them for our projects. And we still have to go through the STIP and through MetroCog to receive this funding, but this just allows MetroCog, or MnDOT to receive them from the FHWA. So this process has worked very well in the past, and in 2022, we had two big federal aid projects that utilized this agreement.
Board questions? Wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve Resolution 2022-40, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, your next item is the request to hire an additional maintenance worker.
Yeah, so the past many years, the highway department has relied on both part-time summer and winter help. And obviously, in the situation we're in currently, these positions have garnered little to no interest. So in order to continue to be able to be fully staffed and have 11 plow trucks out in the wintertime and be able to patch roads in the summer, I am requesting to hire an additional maintenance worker. So this will require no additional equipment, so we already have everything that we need, and this is a budgeted item for 2023.
Thank you for the explanation. Board wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Also, thank you to your crews. I know the roads are crazy, and our employees are just doing a fantastic job. I, I know that not only the county, but the city and state workers are all really struggling to get that ice off that
It's been tough.
that is on. So notice to people to drive cautiously. We're doing the best we can, and until we get some sunlight to activate some of that salt.
Our guys have been out every day, and it's just trying to keep up.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan. Item eight today is a resolution to approve the Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitan Bike and Pedestrian Plan. We have with us Dan Farnsworth from MetroCog. He is a transportation planner. Good to see you today, Dan.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Good to be with you here this morning. I'll go ahead and just give a brief presentation on our bicycle and pedestrian plan that we are just wrapping up. And we are going to all our member jurisdictions and providing a presentation before the plan gets approved, and we will be seeking a resolution of approval, as mentioned before. So I'll get started here with the presentation. So MetroCog every five years updates the bicycle and pedestrian plan for the Fargo-Moorhead metro area, and that does include about half of Clay County. The FM area, including the region here, does have a rich history of bicycle and pedestrian planning, dating back to 1975 or so. And you can see there in the bottom are the, is the current plan, which you would have perhaps in front of you as a printout or maybe as a PDF, I think as a scanned version. If you want to see the more detailed, easier to read the maps version, there is a link in the memo that was probably in your packet as well, I would assume. So you can always take a look at that as well. Also, in the bottom is our previous plan from 2016, which this plan will replace. And the plan looks at existing conditions of what's out there today, as far as bicycle pedestrian infrastructure, policies, and so on, and then provides recommended improvements to make our region more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. You can see here on the map is our planning area, so this is the extents of where our plan has looked at and studied. And so you can see we go out as, past Holly to the east, and also to the southeast, as far as Barnesville is our planning area. And also, you can see on the top there, there's a 23-member study review committee, which we utilize to help guide this plan that we have put together. And that would be our bicycle and pedestrian committee that we host. And we have members from, we have one member from Clay County on that committee, as well as Clay County Public Health. So why do we do a bicycle and pedestrian plan? And here's a few reasons. It provides a framework for jurisdictions such as Clay County to help plan future bicycle pedestrian facilities or infrastructure. And so, that could be used by your planning department, by engineers, by elected officials, by even by the public to take a look at and say, here's a location where we could use some improvements, or a new, a new bikeway or sidewalk. And then also identifies needs from the public to help improve bicycle pedestrian mobility. So I'll mention in a slide or two later about the public involvement that we did. And so, we got a lot of great feedback from the public to see what their desires are in our region. And then lastly, the plan is really helpful in jurisdictions such as Clay County in receiving grant funding. So the picture I put there on the bottom of this slide is in Glendon, that's Park Avenue. And the city of Glendon, in cooperation with Clay County, received a grant, the Transportation Alternatives Grant, several years ago, and recently reconstructed that to have a shared-use path going north-south on Park Avenue, and you can see that in the picture. So that was in a previous plan, and it really helps to have projects in a plan to get that funding. As far as public engagement goes, we had two phases of public involvement. And the first one was in July through November. It was a long engagement timeframe there. We had it online. And so, that was in, yeah, July through November of 2021. We received a total of 347 online survey respondents, which we're really happy to see. And then as far as the online map interactions, we had 256. So people were able to provide suggestions on a online map. And then in phase two, which was the fall of 2022, not quite as many online respondents, but a lot more of the online map interactions. And so, we were happy to see 950 of those. And so, what we heard from the public, we heard a lot, but here are some key takeaways here that we heard from the public, some of the main themes. And one of them would be, the public does really like the trails, the trails that are set away from the roadway, the greenways, say along the river. And so, they wanted to see more of those, ones that, and if they were anything on, on street, they preferred to have some protection between moving traffic and, and the vehicles, such as a parked car. And then also regular maintenance, including winter maintenance on the bikeways and the sidewalks. So things like shoveling of sidewalks has always been a concern of the public, and that's a difficult thing to do, as we all know right now. And also, you know, plowing of, making sure that the, that the paths are also plowed and swept. And that's becoming better in our area, I will say, but is also a challenge for the cities and other jurisdictions to do. We heard a lot about just some things that are out of our control, such as flooding and winter weather. That's always a challenge for people getting around. Also, the lighting, people wanted to see more lighting in the, on, on the streets and along paths. And that also takes money and costs, but it is a desire that the public has more signage to see, you know, where is this path going to, and is there, how does this connect to the greater network? And then also trail conditions improving of those. We know some are in pretty good shape, brand-new ones, but others could use some improvement. Public would like to see more river crossings by that. That would mostly mean the Red River. And you could see there on the picture in this slide, that's not here, that's in Grand Forks. But there has been discussions between Moorhead and Fargo about a, instead of a lift bridge, like you see at Lindenwood, Gooseberry Park, having a raised bridge that'd be high enough that it would be able to never be flooded after the diversion goes in. So that'd be a higher bridge. It costs more, but it wouldn't need to be lifted all the time. And so, that has been discussed between Fargo and Moorhead, and I think there's been some attempts to get some funding for that most, more recently. Public would like to see more education, things like what are the rules of the road, both for pedestrians, bicycles, and for cars. Some people don't quite know how to interact there when, say, passing a bicyclist, or the bikes don't know maybe where they should be, or the pedestrians, when I should cross. And then lastly, more resources and partnerships to help make our community more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. Then we have this map that is in the plan. We have two maps, one's more zoomed into the urban area, and this one is the rural, more zoomed-out one. And what you see in red, it might be a little hard to distinguish the red from the purple. There's a little bit of purple, which would be, say, wide shoulders that people could bike on. You can see those are in the county. And, but what's in red would be the recommended improvements. And so, some of these come out of previous plans that have been done, others come from desires of the public. And probably the one that might stand out to you the most is what you see there going from Moorhead out east toward Holly and beyond, and that would be the proposed Clay County, well, I should say the proposed Heartland Trail. And so, that one has been a big, a big, of big interest to us, to the jurisdictions along the way, and to the public. So that one there is been planned and is currently continuing to be planned, and we, as MetroCog, are looking at doing a, a study in 2024 to further pursue and plan this, this Heartland Trail. So it's a big effort. And so, that's the main one I wanted to point out, and I can go back to this if anybody has any other questions about those proposed trails. Sorry, and back, back there in green, there is also the existing bike and pedestrian ways that we have.
This might be a good time to plug the app that's available.
Yes, I will go ahead and do that. Yeah, so MetroCog has a app that we put out about three years ago, and we update it about every year with the latest bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure that's out there. And you can go to our website to find it, and I wish I had my phone on me right now, it's back in my backpack, but you can search Fargo-Moorhead bikeways map. And it's an app that is, it's a map on your phone, and you can see all these current trails. You can see the wide shoulders, you can see any, any bikeway that's out there. And it will show you your current location as well, and you can also have an aerial photo in the background as well. So anyway.
Sorry to put you on the spot with that, but I know it's, it is a very handy map, and particularly if you are enjoying the routes in the summer, when it is summer, it's good for kids as well. It helps them kind of see where the more specified areas for them to bike is.
Yes, yeah, thanks for bringing that up. We, we like to get the word out, and we try to get the word out every spring, so more people can be aware of it as we, especially as we keep it updated. And this is the last slide. Just wanted to point out that in one of the appendix, appendix G of this report, we have, I think this is really helpful, will be helpful for the jurisdictions, especially the engineers and planners, is the design guidelines. And so, what are the best practices for designing certain bikeways and walkways? And so, this shows everything from traffic calming in urban areas to shared-use paths, as you can see here, and what are the best practices for making those the correct width and, and, and the design of that. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dan?
If we approved this plan, would there be a requirement that everybody follow this plan? I mean, if we put out a bid for a road or something like that, are they required to put a bike path in there? Or is there funding available then for them to put it in there?
Well, I would say this is more of just a guide. There aren't really any requirements tied to it, but it is a very useful tool for the county. If there is any roadways, and say if you're applying for grants, that, that would be probably the most useful thing, and just for planning purposes. So there's no obligations with this plan, but we just are looking for resolutions of support from the different jurisdictions to kind of bolster the plan.
And as noted in the, the larger packet, the actual plan, there are some, the lists of the priorities and the cost estimates, and that really is a living, breathing document that not only MetroCog staff uses, but in collaboration with our planning and engineering departments, MetroCog kind of weighs through that. And as funding becomes available, it's great to have the groundwork done to see if you want to implement something in a project. Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. Just maybe a follow-up to Commissioner Gross's question. When we, when the county establishes our five-year plan for our road projects, road and bridge projects, do you know, is there, are there potential extra dollars involved? Say like our five-year plan right now might not have a bike path or a walking, and typically you get some of our rural areas, it really has to be a shoulder thing and not a separate path because of the cost. Are there, are there potential grant opportunities to add that to a project?
There are. The main one I would point out would be the Transportation Alternatives Grant, and that is one that we work with all the time. And it's a once-a-year grant opportunity, and I think that is a good one to look into because usually the funding's about five years out as well. So if you have your five-year plan, you have plans of perhaps putting in a trail or wider shoulders, perhaps, you could apply through that grant. That's the main one in, that I'm aware of there, that, that we definitely work with in Minnesota. And then there are, if you're working with MnDOT, they would also have some funding for making, they have funding set aside for bicycle pedestrian projects as well.
Any other questions for Dan? You are looking for a approval Any other questions for Dan? You are looking for a approval of the resolution to be recommended then to the MetroCog Board? Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-41.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve Resolution 2022-41.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further, or, I'm sorry, Ebbinghaus, any further discussion? Dan, I know this has been a lot of work and a lot of time, so particularly doing studies like this during a pandemic is tricky, and you did a great job of seeking public involvement and really did get good comments from that. So thank you for the work of you and the consultants and the whole group. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Thank you, Dan. Item nine, a request to approve the six-month amended lease agreement, lease extension for family health care, the dental suite 106A. We have our facilities director, Joe Olson, with us today. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. Yes, so just to give you a quick update before we get into this, six months ago, we entered into an agreement with family health care tenant who, who rents Suite 106A and 106B, two suites that are side by side. The intent was for them to rent 106A at a reduced rate for six months while they start looking into the design process for a full remodel to expand their dental program. So they have now secured the funding, plan on, I'm working closely with their design team, but we, they plan on going out for bids around February, and so that is in full process. So what we're asking today is that we would continue this, this, lease is up right now. We can do another six-month lead, a lease at a reduced rate of $10 a square foot, and come July 1st is when this project's supposed to be done, and I've, that will be when we would do a, enter into a longer agreement. So, so I, but by doing this, it's going to be a revenue reduction of $5,557. Just to note, they, they are putting in over a million dollars into this project, so I, we felt that this would be a, a, a good agreement for the next six months. So I've ran this by the building committee, and questions?
Building Committee certainly supports.
Okay. Has this lease document been through the attorney's office?
Yeah, yeah, all these, all these are, all the leases go through there.
Okay. So we did have some comments that this had been through the building committee and knew this was likely the direction it was going.
Madam Chair, I would move the six-month lease extension.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the lease extension, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion?
If I can, just to, Joe, so when they start this project, do you see any potential for interference amongst other tenants that could develop? Obviously, probably not on the main floor, but.
Yep, yep. No, I don't, it's actually in a nice spot right there. They're going to be setting up trailers to the, would be the south entrance outside, so their, their intent is to kind of work from the south side and not drag everything through the building. And, and we've, and we've had agreements of keeping the noise down and everything. It shouldn't be a problem. Sounds like a pretty.
I was more thinking about the noise level that might happen. We've experienced it here at some point in time, and we're sitting in these board meetings, and you have jackhammers or.
Yeah.
All these power tools going, and it can be.
Yep.
Some interruption. And I, if, if there was that to be, then I think we'd want to give notification to our tenants that this project might be going on for a period of time and to.
Will do, yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. All right, Joe, the next item today is a request to fill the vacant building maintenance tech position.
Yes, so Tom Mallett is his name, is retiring here in February. Can't say enough about him. He's been a just, he's been a solid guy. He's been here, I think he's going on about seven years now. He's, he's retiring, so we are asking to fill his position. So by doing that, we would see a cost savings of $89.52. And the position wouldn't start until he, it'd be about the same time he would be retiring.
Okay.
Move the motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the replacement, a second from Commissioner Campbell. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. The next item is Attachment L.
Yeah, so this one is, has been through the 2023 budget process. Through this year, or actually within the last year and a half, we've really felt that pull since we've expanded over to the government center. We used to be kind of a campus-based, and now I feel that we've, we've went out, we have off-site campuses, so we feel, our off-site area, so we feel that, we've really felt the pull in the maintenance, so we've requested to add an additional staff, maintenance staff to this position. I'm requesting to advertise and hire for this. This grid starts on line 11, step one, so I guess I'm asking to move forward with this.
Okay. Board discussion. Board wishes. Move approval? We have a motion from Commissioner Kaylee to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried.
Thank you.
Item 12 today is a request approval to hire two full-time custodians.
Yeah, this one I want to explain a little bit more. We're not adding, I, we'd be adding two new positions, but we're really, the request here is to over, we've, we've experienced a shortage keeping a full staff, and, and we've seen that shortage or that turnover a lot in our variable hour position. Our variable hours, I want to stress, are very important to us. We, we don't, we want to keep some of them on staff, but we, we felt that we don't have hardly any turnover in the custodian department. It's a, I guess, a blessing on my end, but, so what we're asking is we would take four already budgeted variable hour positions, and we'd combine them to make two full-time positions. So the real add cost, or the real added cost to this is the cost of the benefits. And so this was added to the 2023 budget, and that cost would be $38,039. So our hopes is to, by adding these two full-time positions, instead of constantly filling the, the variable hours, this would help that shortage that we would have. So questions for me on that?
Not a question. I was maybe going to say at the end of your requests, you have really been thoughtful in, in addressing the employee needs as we've really grown services and buildings. And, and so if someone were to look at the agenda today and see, wow, there's a whole bunch of requests from our facilities, it really has been a thoughtful process, and you've really, your crew is fantastic and really, I know you said Tom does, can't say enough about just Tom, but it really is everyone. They do such a fantastic job, and, and so you know when a request comes from you, it's, it's really needed but thought out, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Campbell?
Whether this is for Joe or for Steve maybe, but just, so the, the line items on the budget, there is a line item for variable hour, and then there's a line item for salaries. So in the, in the new budget for 2023, the variable hour line item will be reduced, and the salaries line item will increase. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we didn't, we didn't reduce the variable hours, we just added the maintenance cost of it all. But yes, I mean, essentially, we're not going to be paying for four variable hours.
At some point in time, we want to be able to compare apples to apples, and unless you do that.
Yep.
You won't be able to compare apples to apples moving forward.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, and I, and I noticed, okay, and I guess I have another question when we get into your next one that you have.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions on this one, 12?
Seeing this as a budget item that was approved in the budget process, I would move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the request.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. We'll take item 13, and just for anyone watching, we will take a five-minute break after this one before moving into the next agenda items. Your item 13 is a new variable custodial position for the Resource Recovery Center.
Yeah, so this one, obviously, we're opening up sometime in February, so we had looked at the area, and this one definitely is a, I guess, a candidate for a variable hour position. It's, it's roughly, roughly three hours of cleaning per night. So what we've done here is we added, we added, the cost of a variable hour is $16,047. What we did during the budget process is we added that expense over into the Resource Recovery Center Enterprise Fund, and it's going to show as a revenue coming out of the courthouse budget. So it's kind of an in and out for me, but it's a more of an expense for Corey and the Resource Recovery Center building, so.
Discussion?
The only question that I have, because just in your previous one, you talked about how difficult it is to keep your variable hour people, and.
Yeah.
Now in this request, you're asking for a variable hour person to do that job.
Yeah, definitely seems funny there. We, we, we only have a certain amount of, I guess, variable hour positions, and each variable hour or full-time or permanent part-time, we have three different types of positions, are all scheduled per building. And so, you know, when we took the, the four, that we haven't been able to fill those four variable hours, you know, and so that's, it's not four positions that are going away, it's kind of, kind of creating two positions, two full-time positions. But this one was kind of a, it's off by itself. We don't really like to split a full-timer, make them go somewhere off-campus and then come back. It's kind of, and so this one seemed to be an office, it's an office setting, and it's, it's easier to fill. We've already actually had kind of a few variable hours interested in it. So it, it does contradict it a little bit, but it's a, it's a far off-site one that seems to work well. Government center variable hours work well there as well. So it's, it's on campus, I think that's struggled to fill that, but, so.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 9:37. Item 14 then, today is a resolution to establish a personnel administration system for Clay County. We have our human resources director, Darren Brooke. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Don't let this stack of paper scare you away. It's mostly good stuff. But the first thing is this resolution that is establishing a personnel administration system, and it's, this is kind of a formality more than anything else, because if you remember back in, I think it was January, we wanted to get out of the merit system. And Rhonda and I have been wanting to do this for several years now, and basically we pay merit system $30,357, $30,357 a year to stay into this system. And the merit system is designed basically for smaller counties or organizations that don't necessarily have a robust human resources department. And so the merit system is set up by the state to perform some of those duties, which means testing, application process, selection process. They would then send us candidates to look at, and if we didn't get anybody out of that pool, then we'd have to, they'd have to send another list. It became very onerous, which is a lot of the stuff that this HR department does. And so on September 28th, it's, it's kind of a long process to get out. You can't just say, I want to get out and stop paying them, which would have been nice, but it is kind of a long process. So they sent us a ton of materials, 76 questions that we had to answer, establishing what, how we run our human resources department. Everything from posting jobs, training, edu, testing, application reviews, interviewing, basically everything that has to do with HR. So I submitted that, 76 questions, on September 28th. We then had a meeting with the merit system, and then to, to kind of go over those questions and explain the process. Then they sent me another 12 questions, 12 or 15 questions, I can't remember exactly how many it was, and I answered all of them. Then we had another meeting with them just last week, and they are going to certify us to get out of the merit system. So they have to send the certification to the Commissioner DHS. Once he signs it, then they'll send it to us. We look at getting that by January 10th board meeting, and then I'll bring that to, to this board as well. Two of the things that we have to do as a requirement is this resolution that we're here today to, to talk about. And also, we have to set up a personnel administration system and a personnel appeals board, which, the personnel administrative system is my department, basically. So this is, this is just a formality. In these, in the statutes, you are allowed to appoint me as the HR director. I'm hoping that you'll do that, because this is, this is designed that somebody that doesn't have an HR department. So anyway, the other thing that has to be set up is a personnel appeals board, which is also kind of redundant because we have a personnel issues committee. But the personnel issues board requires that we have three board members, not these board members, but three members of a committee to take any appeals for something that they think is unjust during the application process, the interviewing process, or anything like that. I've talked to several other counties that have gotten out of the merit system already and have set up this personnel appeals board, but nobody's ever used it. So we're going to talk a little bit more about what it entails and everything at the PIC meeting after this board meeting, but I just wanted to let you know that that is out there, and I'll bring more information on that once the PIC talks about it. So at this point, I think that was it. Pending questions?
Okay. Questions for the board for Darren?
And you should have the resolution in front of you. It's 2022-38.
I think it's 42.
42.
Oh, what is it? Four? Oh, okay.
Oh, for, it's for clarification in the packet, 2022-42.
42, okay. Thank you.
Board discussion?
Chair, move the resolution.
Motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to approve Resolution 2022-42.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. 15 is the year-end items.
Yep, this is always the, the time of year that I bring all the year-end items for 2023. And as you see on the agenda item information sheet, these are some of the things that we have talked about in the past. These have been through the PIC already, the Personnel Issues Committee, and was approved. The first thing is the grid adjustment for 2023. That will be a 4% to add to the existing grid. That will be for everybody unless the unions have not a finished contract yet. So I just want to put that out. We had a little bit of a discussion last year that, that some of the unions thought they were already getting the 4%, but that will be retroactive once the contracts are signed. So do you want me to just go through each one of these and then vote on them as we go, or vote on them as a package?
I think we do them individually.
Okay. So the first one would be the 4% increase to the Clay County grid in 2023.
Okay.
And again, to, to clarify, that will be for all employees and those unions that have.
That have a signed contract.
Signed contract.
Correct.
I would make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve item number one, a second from Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Approve as presented, the 4%. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry.
All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Item two is the meal reimbursement rates.
The meal reimbursement rates are on the second sheet that you have. The meal reimbursement rates are on the second sheet that you have here. These were last updated in two thousand and nineteen. The PIC recommended that they remain the same. Breakfast at fifteen dollars, lunch at twenty dollars, and dinner at thirty dollars would be the reimbursement rates.
Move to approve.
Motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve item number two.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item three.
Okay, item three is the per diem rates for twenty twenty-three. They were last updated in two thousand and fifteen. They are currently one hundred dollars per day.
Commissioner Campbell?
I can ask you, so this doesn't have anything to do with the per diem rates that we established for our different committees, like planning?
No, this is just, those are all separate.
I, I would move that we keep the rates the same.
Second.
Motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to approve no change in the per diem rates. A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item four is the mileage rate.
Okay, the mileage rate increase, in our personnel policy, we have it tied to whatever the IRS rate is. I haven't gotten that information yet, but right now it's, I think, sixty-two point five cents per mile. The other reimbursement rate we have for mileage has, was last updated in two thousand and ten. And that's when a person has to use their own POV, personally-owned vehicle, to go to a meeting, conference, whatever the case may be. And we reimburse at forty cents per mile when they have to use their own vehicle. I brought this to the Personnel Issues Committee as well. This was last updated in twenty, two thousand and ten. And the Personnel Issues Committee is recommending that that mileage reimbursement rate be increased to fifty cents a mile instead of forty cents a mile.
Can kind of carry the conversation a little bit. This did come before the Personnel Issues Committee. And certainly, we, we go with the IRS rate on, on the mileage reimbursement. But did talk a little bit about how sometimes staff are not able to access these vehicles or just staffing-wise doesn't quite make sense. And, and because the cost of repairs and everything has gone up, certainly felt that having a nominal change reflected in that, that second item made sense. Commissioner Campbell?
Can I just ask for clarification? So if a fleet vehicle isn't available, do they, do they get the federal rate?
They get the IRS.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, because I thought that was the case.
That was a missed quote on mine.
Yeah, if the, if the vehicle is not, if a county vehicle is not available, then they get the IRS rate. If the county vehicle is available, but they choose to take their own vehicle, it would be fifty cents a mile.
I would move the, that we establish the federal rate and the increase to, from forty to fifty cents per mile.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the mileage rates. A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item five today is the twenty twenty-three furlough program.
Yep, the furlough program has been in existence for, since I've been here. We've made some modifications to it, but overall, it's, I think it's a very successful program. For, I ran the numbers on December seventh. And for twenty twenty-two, our employees used eight hundred and fifty-six hours of furlough for a total savings or cost for, of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. It does help out with employees that may not have enough vacation or sick leave to take. And so it has been a very beneficial program for both employees and the county. And so we're proposing no changes to the current furlough program.
Board discussion?
Move to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item six today would be to add Juneteenth and a half-day for the Christmas holiday.
Yeah, there's a slight correction there. That's the Christmas Eve holiday. We already observe Christmas as an eight-hour holiday. And what this would be, would be to add Juneteenth as a holiday, paid holiday, in, starting in twenty twenty-three. And also, a four-hour paid holiday on Christmas Eve, starting in twenty twenty-three. This is something that we have also negotiated with the unions, based on some earlier conversations with the board.
Madam Chair, can I, Darren, can you just, for the sake of those who might be watching and have interest in this, can you explain how the process will work when these holidays would fall on a weekend?
Yep, in the personnel policy, if a holiday falls on a Sunday, it's observed on Monday. And then if a holiday falls on a Saturday, then it's observed on Friday.
This is the perfect year to show as an example.
Exactly.
Would this policy be in effect this year?
Yes.
There would be four hours of holiday pay for staff on Friday. Because Christmas Eve is on Saturday. And because Christmas Day is on Sunday, the holiday would then be observed on the Monday.
Correct. Correct.
Yep, so there wouldn't be a, there wouldn't be a case of it being a Saturday, Sunday, and then a Monday, Tuesday type thing.
Correct. And, and for next year, which is kind of a weird year as well, where Christmas is on a Monday, it will be observed on Monday. Christmas Eve is on a Sunday. You can't observe both holidays at the same time. So it would be the Friday before, four hours on the Friday before. And this would be next year. And then the following years, it would just be on the day that it is.
Thank you for that clarification.
Move approval? Motion offered from Commissioner Kaylee.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. I, I just need to comment that I, I feel like this is a really big deal to recognize an important date in history as well, or in our nation. So I'm really excited to be on the board when we do something like this. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Excuse me, just forgot to ask a question. So they have eleven and a half days of holidays now?
Correct. Yeah, they have ten holidays paid right now. This will make it eleven and a half.
They got, they're full of occasion time, that's twenty-six extra days then? What's their, what's your full vacation time?
It depends on how many years you've been here.
What's your full, the full one?
Well, it's, when you first get here, it's eight hours per month. So twelve hours, whatever that, ninety, ninety-six, ninety-six hours of vacation per year.
Okay. Thank you.
We did vote on that, so we'll move to item seven, which would be the change vacation use policy.
Yep, the vacation usage policy, this came up also during some union negotiations and also discussion with, during a closed session on, right now, new employees cannot use their vacation for six months and cannot use their sick leave for one month. And so after some discussion and some negotiations with the union, it was recommended that people be allowed to use their vacation as it is accrued. So like Commissioner Gross said, each, each sick leave is three point seven hours per pay period, eight hours per month, averages out over twelve, twelve months. And then the same with, with vacation, depending on how many years you've been here, it goes up accordingly. And so, you know, I guess we, we kind of figured out that life goes on, whether you're here six months or, or one month or one week. And so they would not be allowed to use their vacation in the pay period that is accrued, but they can use it the, the following pay period. And be allowed, so technically, if somebody got here and they could start using the vacation that they accrued the first pay period, they could possibly use that in the second pay period. I don't think this is going to be a huge issue. The other thing that is, that we agreed upon was that if they left before their probationary period, any vacation that they had would be forfeited. So that's the same policy that we have now, is if they leave prior to their probation period, then there would, they would not get the vacation paid out.
Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, we, we talked about this quite a bit at a PIC meeting. And I think one of the important issues here is, you know, with our current market conditions and hiring process, it's really difficult to have somebody who might be applying, who might be leaving another job and saying, well, boy, now I, if I do take this, I've got to wait six months before I take any time. And, and I, I think it's, we need to really pay attention to these things, just from a recruiting standpoint, too. It's really important to us to be able to let them know that they're going to be accruing some time that they can act, they're going to be accruing the time on the current policy, but they can't use it till after six months. And this one just would allow them to do that. And I, and I think we got a, you know, certainly a recommendation from PIC that this is the right way to, to move forward.
Correct.
Discussion from the board? Any further discussion? Board wishes? Move approval? Motion offered from Commissioner Kaylee to approve.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
Clarification?
Yes.
Is, is this something that will be in contracts or?
Yes, it, it will be in the contracts as well. That's, that's what we have already negotiated with the unions.
So those, so those contracts that have been approved has this?
Correct.
Okay, just emphasize that, okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Madam Chair, can I just, just briefly go back to the Juneteenth and the Christmas holiday? That, that one was also with the same stipulation, right?
Correct.
That those, those, for all union contracts that have been settled and all of their employees.
Correct.
I just, I don't know that.
I'm hoping we have them all settled by Juneteenth.
Pardon me?
I'm, I'm hoping we have them all settled by Juneteenth.
Yeah, but no, but, but until those contracts are approved.
Exactly.
They would not apply.
Yes, the, the union contracts that are not approved or signed yet will continue. So they're, whatever's in the twenty twenty-two contract, it will carry on until we have a new contract. That includes wages, holidays, vacation, all of that stuff. The contract remains in effect until a new contract is signed.
I just bring that up because in case somebody says, well, what did the board mean in this?
Absolutely.
It's a good segue into your next item, which is the union contract approval.
Yes, I have some good news there. And it was, it was coming hot off the press as I was sitting back there. That, and, and I have my handy-dandy patent-pending union negotiation spreadsheet here. But we do have approved and signed contracts, you haven't approved it, of course, yet, but we have approved and signed contracts for corrections. The attorneys, which I just got this morning, and the deputies, which I'm waiting for signatures. And so we also have tentative agreements with the, or we have, I'm sorry, we have a signed contract with the lieutenants, with the correctional officers, the correctional sergeants, we have a TA with tentative agreement. And with the attorney, I have a signed contract as well. And the deputies, I will be bringing that to you on the twenty-seventh. I'm just waiting for the final steward's signatures on that. So I have three contracts here that will be signed today, if it is all approved. We have three contracts that are still outstanding, social workers, detox, and highway. We do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with the social workers in detox. And we've got a counteroffer from the highway already. We are still a long way away when it comes to COLAs for the social workers in detox. So it'll be good to get the ones that we've got completed here done, signed, and then we can move on to the other three that we're still working on.
Okay. So because I, I don't have the forms in front of me, we need individual motions on the three that you have, or?
Yes, I would say for, I have corrections, I have lieutenants, and I have
Attorney.
Attorneys. Correct. And so the, the, those would be the three that I would want approval on.
Move approval of the three contracts.
Second.
Just for clarification, I asked if you needed individual, and you said yes. Is it okay if they're all together?
I, I think there would be okay if it was all together because we're bringing it as.
Perfect. So we have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve all three of the union negotiation contracts. I didn't recall who said second, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Darren, do you want to maybe just touch base on the, the cost impact section? You also talked about shortening the grid and the market study piece.
Yes. The, one of the things that we had discussed earlier is shortening the grid from fifteen years to eleven years. That would be from, as you know, steps eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve are all two-year steps. And what the proposal and agreements were, that we would shorten that grid to one-year steps, starting in twenty twenty-four. So in twenty twenty-three, it would not impact anything. In twenty twenty-four, we would shorten the grid. The other thing that we talked about, both in closed session and I think a little bit on the, as a board as well, is to do a wage, market study, wage comparison in twenty twenty-four with the implementation in twenty twenty-five. So those would be the big things. And then, of course, what we just approved, as far as the Juneteenth and the half-day Christmas Eve, were also agreed to in the contracts as well.
Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you, Darren. I know it takes a momentous amount of work to get to this point. I'm hopeful that we can reach agreements with the rest of our unions.
We're, we continue to try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number seventeen, thank you for being patient, James. We have the permission to sign Lakeland contracts for twenty twenty-three.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here to request permission to sign Lakeland, Lakeland contract, well, actually, it's three separate contracts for the coordination psychologist and psychiatric medication provider. This is a program that we've been running for close to twenty years now. It was well before my time. It continues to be a valuable program and are non-secure. It brings a whole slew of professionals together, and they'll come to our facility. And that's quite critical. Coordination's looking for a two percent raise over twenty twenty-two. The psychologist is a two percent raise, and the psychiatric med provider is a twenty-four percent. That's, that's pretty reasonable considering, like, they're, they're having difficulty filling it and finding that right now. They have nobody right now. But they have some MDs available, which would be some medical doctors that come at a little bit higher cost. Lakeland works well with us, and they don't, they do whatever they can to provide us the services, so they break even themselves. And that's really all I have about that. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, any questions from the board?
Because I serve on that committee, you can comment a little bit. On the 24% raise certainly was alarming to us, but unfortunately, the flip side is to not have the service at all. And that's vitally important to the kiddos that you serve. And like you said, Lakeland is trying to piecemeal together the best possible solution and has been careful in asking for increases to the areas that also cost them money. I know for years, a psychologist, they were taking $100,000 loss on that. So it is a small raise. Unfortunately, that's the cost of business sometimes.
Board wishes?
Move approval?
Motion to approve the item.
Second.
A second from, a motion from Commissioner Kaylee, a second from Commissioner Evinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Item 18, today is a permission to hire two full-time staff in the non-secure unit.
Okay, yeah, this is in reference to the grant that you accepted last week. And it's just requesting permission to fill those positions as outlined in the grant.
Board wishes?
Move approval?
Motion offered from Commissioner Kaylee to approve the two hires.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Evinger. Any further discussion?
These are footnoted as grant positions?
They are grant positions, but prior to the grant, it was.
We'd already approved it.
Yeah, I think, I don't know.
Okay, so these, these positions are not subject to grant funding?
These two positions will get reimbursed by the state for these two positions.
So these positions had been in your budget?
No, they were added in June of 20, in June of 2022, when I was building the budget for the needs of Clay County.
Gotcha, and then you secured the grant.
And then I secured the grant after that.
Okay, that's, just want to make sure that's verified.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any discussion? We, now I forgot, did we get a motion already?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried.
Okay, my last thing is for the variable hour positions. Again, variable hour positions are very critical to us and our operation. It provides us with a tremendous amount of flexibility for when our service needs are high and when they're low. We have, we had all full-time staff and our service needs were low. I guess the value that the county would be getting wouldn't be as significant, so. And the variable hour also provide us ability to immediately respond to increases in needs. And so it's critical, variable hour basically is part-time staff that's not getting benefits. Traditionally, it's a college-age youth that aren't working for the benefits anyways. Currently, right now, the starting pay for our variable hour staff is $18.61 an hour. The request would be to move the percentage up to make the starting wage $20.18 an hour. I think that's probably where we need to be, considering like, for an example, in our CLIPS non-secure unit, we have some youth that obtain jobs over there that make more money than some of the part-time staff, so.
All right, board wishes?
Move approval?
Motion offered from Commissioner Kaylee to approve the request.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Thank you very much, James. We appreciate your work. Item 20 today is a request to add RN supervisor for detox. We have Kathy McKay with us today, our Public Health Administrator, and Troy Amundson, our detox director. Good morning to you both.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so this request, we had an RN that was in our 2023 budget for detox. But there's a definite need for an RN supervisor who would supervise all of the nursing, the nurses, LPNs and RNs, which will be helpful to the detox director. So there, there's a lot of responsibilities that this RN will take over as a supervisor. So not only assisting on the staff, but also assisting the detox director in the requirements of our operations. We did discuss this at our PIC meeting as well. We did have, again, the budget, budgeted amount was for an RN. The supervisor will be on a little bit higher level, so our request was, I believe it was 9,000, we're a little bit, we'll be a little bit over 9,350 with the RN supervisor versus the requested amount for the RN in our 2023 budget. We do have withdrawal management, as long as we have a nurse on every shift, we are able to bill at a higher rate for that, so that's our hope. It's been challenging to have an RN on every shift when we can't, or an RN or an LPN, excuse me, so either one, either nurse has to be there on the shift. And we have been very short-staffed, so we've missed some billings because there isn't a nurse on the shift, so we can't bail for withdrawal management. So this will be helpful as well. And, and the reimbursement is higher, so covers, it'll cover more of the operations, including the RN supervisor.
Certainly understand the need. Can you remind me, or maybe the board, why we just approved our budget? Why this didn't come before in the budget discussions?
We anticipated being able to have an RN just as a regular staff, but because of all of the requirements for supervision, we really, at the end of the year, determined our RN supervisor was going to be starting in 2024, but we realized there's the need now with the additional staff and the inability to recruit nurses. It's been challenging to get LPNs and RNs, very challenging. And we have really a difficult time retaining them as well. So we have an, someone that supervises all of it, it will just be extremely helpful. So yes, we didn't anticipate the needs at this soon in the game, but they are there.
Questions from the board?
I think may, I don't know if the, Kathy did the recent announcement of resignation of the overall supervisor of nurses. Did that have an impact on the need to have, have this position?
I know, that, that's a completely separate program area, so that position didn't cover any of the detox.
Board discussion? Commissioner Kaylee?
Certainly, I see that the need is there, and we have a very large project that we're working on as well, and so the needs are just going to continue to grow. And yeah, that hiring has really been a challenge. And so I'm hopeful that adding this will make it easier to hire and have a nurse there all the time, so that we can get that higher reimbursement rate. And with that in mind, I would move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the request.
Second.
A second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
uneasy on you, Troy.
Yeah.
You can stay up here if you want.
Yeah. The next item today is a 2023 budgeted request for the full three FTE RNs and 1.8 case aid.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This was in our 2023 budget, so our, the area, program area of case management is growing significantly. We have additional cases coming up. As you can see, our, our numbers are already high. All of our case managers are at over their case capacity. And then we are going to get an additional 750 more clients to our mint choices annually, so we have an inability to manage that many. So we did anticipate that our numbers would grow, so we had put this in our 2023 budget for three full-time RNs and a 0.8 case aid, just to try to manage the extensive load. It is, it is really an area of, of growth. So budgeted for, planned for it, and we receive our revenue through our health plan contracts and our time studies.
Okay, and I see in the memo you are anticipating the need for additional office space. Are you having discussions regarding that?
Just have been talking with Joe, mentioned it to the county administrator, so we'll have further discussions because we're full in the area where these nurses should be housed, so I'm not sure what kind of expansion we can do. But anyway, we'll be, we'll have to discuss space for those individuals.
I'm sensing a little bit of lobbying for some, what will be a former detox space coming up.
Yeah, we, we could put them out maybe on one of the roofs for the first year, and then we can use detox after that. But yeah, if we hire them in 2023, that, that'll be the challenge.
We're supposed to recruit people, so if you say stuff like that in an open meeting, they're likely to apply. You know, I certainly approve the request. This is not, this is not approving where that allocated space would be. That needs to be an additional conversation.
I know, Madam Chair, I could ask Troy to kind of move into a closet space, and maybe that would be acceptable.
I'm a team player, I could make that work.
Yeah, you are, thank you for that. Any other discussion? So we do have a motion and a second on the table. Three? Frank?
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion.
Frank makes a motion to approve the requests.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Evinger. These long meetings. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is an extension update. We are a little ahead of schedule for that. Do you mind doing some? Is he coming in? Hi. Sorry, when people wait in the hallway, I don't.
We just got here.
That's all right, that's great, come on up. We do have the egg, food and natural resource extension update today. We have several of you with us. Good morning. Feel free to introduce yourself to the board when you sit down.
My name is Lisa Legering, I'm the one of.
Why don't you grab a microphone, Lisa? There you go.
My name's Lisa Legering, I'm one of two regional directors who work in Northwest Minnesota. And so I'm here to introduce to you today two of our employees in the, in the Moorhead, or in the Clay County, County Extension Office. And so the first one is Don Lovett. Don Lovett grew up in Arlington, South Dakota. She has an associate's degree in administrative support from M State and a bachelor's degree in mass communications from MSUM. Don chose to stay in the area after graduation, and we benefited from that decision when she applied for a grant, or applied for a position in the, in our office as the principal office and administrative specialist, just shy of two months ago. So wanted to introduce her, and then as well introduce, secondly, Randy Nelson. Randy's a local extension educator in Clay County, a position he's held since 2007. Randy has a BS degree in horticulture from the University of Minnesota-Crookston and MS in horticulture from North Dakota State University, and recently completed his PhD in soil science, also from North Dakota State University. Randy's here today to give you an update on his work in egg, food and natural resources.
Awesome, good morning, thank you for being here.
Good morning, thank you, Lisa, for that introduction. A few weeks back, Regional Director Cecilia Amidu had asked me to give the board an update basically on the activities that I've worked on over the past year, and that's what this presentation is going to detail. As a local extension educator, my job includes both horticulture and agriculture education in Clay County, and because of that, I have the opportunity to work with a lot of associations as well as organizations. And one association that I get to work with is the Clay County Crop Improvement. And I meet with them, or I should say, I work with them annually to develop our crops update program. And you're looking at the agenda from our 2022 program. And this particular event is geared towards farmers and crop consultants, and we typically have a person there talking about weather, marketing, we have a small grains update or weeds update during this program as well. And we also have local updates from the local FSA office as well as Clay Soil and Water during that event. And we're very fortunate, you can see our long list of sponsors on here. They help cover the cost of renting the facility as well as paying for our, our noon meal. And if you're interested, our 2023 program will be held on January 17th at the TAK, or T-A-K Music Venue located in Dilworth. And we're still working on a few details in our agenda for that event. Another program I work with is a private pesticide applicator training, and any farmer that's supplying a restricted-use pesticide to their farmland has to hold this certification. Once they have it, they have to renew it every three years. And one option for them to renew this is to take an in-person workshop, which takes about three and a half hours. I work with the regional educator, and we host this at the Comstock Community Center. And we have our training coming up on January 12th, this for 2023, running from 1:00 to 4:30. And there are other options, too, for farmers, they can, if they want to, they can retake the test, and they can do that by filling out the test, or they can do it online. But once they're certified, a majority of them appreciate taking this in-person workshop. And we usually have anywhere from 20 to 30 farmers that utilize this program, or utilize our training in Comstock. One organization that I work with is the Northern Plains Sustainable Egg Society, and I joined their Board of Directors in 2019. I currently serve as their secretary, and their mission is to promote sustainable food systems through education and research. And one of their main educational opportunities is their winter conference. This year, the, or I should say, our 2023 conference will be held at the Fargo Holiday Inn on January 26th through the 28th. And last year, we had about 100 people in attendance, and that was the year after COVID. And we're hoping this year to have at least 150 in attendance. And if you're interested in going to this, if you use your browser of choice, type in Northern Plains Sustainable Egg, you can register for the event right on the website. One of the main research projects that Northern Plains works with is known as the Farm Breeder Network, formerly known as the Farm Breeder Club. And the Farm Breeder Network, it's a group of members that are promoting seed-saving and on-farm crop breeding. This used to be done quite commonly in years past, but recently, not many farmers have, have done it. And their goal is to keep breeding and seed-saving rights for farmers, basically making sure that this remains in the public domain and all have access to it. And they're currently doing a lot of work on small grains, in particular, spring wheat and barley. Oops. Another organization that I have the opportunity to work with is the American Rose Trials for Sustainability, known by their acronym of ARTS. And I also serve on their Board of Directors, and they have a two-part mission. The first part is through regional evaluation and testing under low-input conditions to find roses that are resistant to disease and insect pests in a particular region. The second part of their mission is to make sure that that information from those rose trials is made available to industry professionals and the gardening public. And I'll talk a little bit about the first part of that mission. This particular program runs nationwide. We have anywhere from probably 10 to 14 trial sites, it changes every year, but we have trial sites in California, Oregon, Texas, Louisiana, Connecticut. And the picture you're looking at is the only trial site located in the state of Minnesota, which is at Oak Tree Park in Dilworth. And I mentioned before that part of the trialing is, is low input or minimal inputs. And the setup is pretty straightforward. Plant-based compost is tilled into the soil, the roses are planted, and then they're maintained with about a three-inch layer of organic mulch. We use woodships. And that woodship depth is maintained throughout the trial duration. These are pretty quick trials, they're two years. We can have up to 20 individual cult. We can have up to 20 individual cultivars, or 20 different roses in the trial. Each of those are represented three times, so at a trial site, we can have up to 60 roses. These roses are evaluated monthly, which is really time-consuming. And typically, we're rating from May through October. That, of course, depends on our growing season in a particular year. They're rated on a 10-point scale, and I've been very fortunate for our trial site in Dilworth, that we have Extension Master Gardeners that are willing to donate their time, or volunteer their time, to go through and evaluate. And they've done this for a number of years, and without their help, we wouldn't be able to do this. And I also want to point out the support from the city of Dilworth, in particular from the maintenance supervisor Jeff Berg and his crew, they've been wonderful to work with, and without their support, we wouldn't be able to do this either. A little bit more on kind of how the program, or how the trial is run. Like I said, minimal maintenance, we water the first year as needed during establishment. We have never had to water the second year, given our growing conditions and the mulch that we're using. We provide no winter cover, although Mother Nature is doing a wonderful job so far this growing season. We don't deadhead, meaning that we don't cut off the spent blooms. We apply no pesticides for diseases, insects, or mites to the roses, and then we don't prune to maintain the plant form.
It's the one in 12th Avenue, or 50th Avenue, and still going to, Highway 75?
Oh, that one, great question, Commissioner Gross. That was an old, an old EarthKind trial, and that one is no longer, actually, it's no longer there. The city of Moorhead moved it, but thankfully, they were able to utilize most of those roses. So if you've noticed some of the new plantings at some of the city properties, and you see roses there, a lot of the roses came from that trial.
Okay, thank you.
As far as our awards go, after two years, the test, the scores of those test roses are then compared with two control cultivars that we have at each of these trial locations, and if a test rose score is equal to or greater than the average of those two controls for a particular region, they're given what's known as a local artist award. And if a rose happens to win four or more local artist awards, it's also given a master rose designation, just to show that it has a wider geographical adaptability. As far as how we do outreach, I give a lot of local tours of our research site, and usually it's garden clubs that contact me wanting to go through and find out about the trial, how it's conducted, but mainly to see the roses that have won. I just have a, just a sampling of five of the award-winning roses, but I really enjoy the tours because I can showcase the award-winning roses. And I also do a number of rose presentations throughout the year, and I always highlight our results from the arts program. We also have a website that is utilized by home gardeners as well as industry. In fact, we were recognized in 2021 with a national award from the American Society for Horticultural Science in their Extension Division, and we were recognized for educational merit. In addition to our website, we also reach out, oh, I'm getting ahead of myself, I'll show you a little bit more about our website. If you go to trustedroses.com, there is a link on there that you can click that says "Award Winning Roses." When you click on that, it'll bring you to the Copping map, which you're looking at on the left-hand side, and we have nine regions in, in the continental U.S. We're considered the DFB, or that darker blue. When you click on the DFB, the picture on the right-hand side will come up, and that's all the award-winning roses, and this is just a partial list of them for our region. And then if you click on the name of each of those roses, which is kind of hard to see, but if you click on that, there's additional information on each one of those rose cultivars. So if you wanted to find out height and some other attributes of the rose, you can find it on our website. In addition to the website, we try to reach industry professionals through trade magazine publications. Every year, we have an annual article in Nursery Management in their May edition, that's their rose edition of the magazine, where we showcase the award-winning roses throughout the country. And a colleague of mine, we've been doing an article in The Scoop, which is the official publication of the Minnesota Nursery and Landscape Association, where we highlight just the award-winning roses for our area. And we try to reach the research community by attending the annual American Society for Horticultural Science Conference, and this is the poster that was presented this past August at, at that particular meeting. During the growing season, I spend a lot of time on technical assistance. I've answered about 629 questions this year. As you can see by the numbers, a majority of those are related to horticulture, about 575, with the remaining being agriculture. And one of the funnest parts of my job is that I have time, I can go out and actually visit homeowners or landowners to see their problems firsthand, and then try to help them solve that. And I did 88 site visits this year, and a majority of those two, 86, were related to horticulture questions. Some of the main questions I get are related to lawns and trees. The very top photo is a lawn disease. Bottom left is a lawn that is, actually has a really nice infestation of sad webworm, and I say "nice infestation" because it's not my lawn. I'd never seen a lawn that peppered with sad webworm before. And then some of the tree issues that we deal with are nutrient, and you're looking on the far lower-right picture is maple that has iron deficiency chlorosis. I do educational presentations too, throughout the year. I gave 20 presentations, 15 of those were horticulture topics, five of those were agriculture topics, and I reached roughly 674 people with those. I've written 37 news articles. Those mainly go to the FM Extra, and also KFGO has been willing to post those on their website. And I do have a monthly newsletter that goes out, and that covers pertinent agriculture and horticulture topics for the county, and so far, my newsletter list goes out to, or my newsletter list is 100, has 193 people on there. Over the years, I have been very fortunate with radio. I currently have three programs on three different radio stations at various times throughout the growing season. So this past year, I did 33 segments on KFGO, and I was on with their morning crew, 28 segments on WDAY with Bonnie and Friends, and then 13 segments on AM 1100 with the Need to Know Morning Show. And also, this growing season, I was able to be on with another program on WDAY, that's Weather and Ag in Focus, and that's been a monthly segment, but what's really cool about that one is that I'm on for about 30 minutes, so we can kind of go a little bit more in-depth on horticulture topics, or, you know, whatever questions are coming in. The other three that I previously had mentioned, usually those segments are about five to 10 minutes, it depends on the questions that are coming into the studio when we're on air. So in total, I did 82 radio segments this year. And the last thing I want to mention is the Extension Master Gardeners, very fortunate that I get to serve as their county coordinator. We have 25 Extension Master Gardeners that are in our program. 15 of those Master Gardeners did their training through the University of Minnesota Extension, and I also work with 10 Extension Master Gardeners that did their training with NDSU Extension, but they still participate with our group. This is a very active group of volunteers, very dedicated to delivering horticulture information. For 2021, they volunteered over 790 hours. Now, keep in mind that 790 hours is only for the 15 Extension Master Gardeners that were certified in Minnesota, because those are the records that I have access to. We probably have another good 400, 500 hours from the 10 Extension Master Gardeners that did their certification through NDSU. They report all their numbers to NDSU. There's at least 17 projects that our Extension Master Gardeners are working on. I mentioned the arts program, where they're going through and, and rating our roses. I talked earlier about Northern Plains Sustainable Egg. The Master Gardeners are going to be working this year with Northern Plains at that conference because they, they offer a children's program. I think they're going to have three or four children's program throughout the three-day conference, and the Extension Master Gardeners will be there, talking about pollinators, plants, and whatnot. Some of the other programs that they've worked with is a gardening with children program, One Vegetable, One Community. And a couple of years ago, we had an Extension Master Gardener that joined, that's a playwright, and she's currently done two plays that are children's plays, and throughout the course of the play, they're learning about nature, animals, plants, as well as pollinators, was included in, in this year's program. And again, just very fortunate to be able to work with such a great group of, of Extension volunteers. With that, thank you all for your time, and if I happen to have any time remaining, I'm certainly open to questions or comments.
Thank you. Well, it was well timed to have photos of flowers in fall, or summer, excuse me, on a 40-below-wind chill day, so thank you for that. As the snow begins to pile up, one pertinent tip that you gave at the Extension Committee last week is, maybe you would like to explain that in regards to rodent-proofing your trees?
Yes, many of us are dealing with rabbits in particular, and many people have tree guards that were placed on there, but as that snow piles up, rabbits will use that snow as a shelf, and they just start eating higher in the canopy, in particular on apples or trees that were recently planted with thin bark. So either go out shovel around those trees, or just add more protector to that, just to make sure that they are protected. Otherwise, you might come out one day and find that halfway up in your tree, it has been eaten.
Balls, anything? Commissioner Campbell?
Randy, you had mentioned in your earlier part of your presentation, you were talking about the pesticide training program for producers, and I'm just wondering, so through our recycling program with Clay County, we also, I think it's once a year where we offer a pesticide collection program for unused pesticides. Do you or can you maybe probably through these programs, remind them of that availability of that?
We sure can. And Commissioner Campbell, do you know how far in advance they know the dates? And the reason I'm asking that question, if they were known ahead of time, I could be promoting the program that would be held in 2023 at our event coming up on January 12th, because I do get a few phone calls that come in during the season, and I'd love to promote that.
Yeah, so maybe what we can do is we can connect you with Shannon, who handles all of our, those recycling efforts for us, and I'm not, I'm not really sure as to when that date is set up, but I, I know.
Looking.
Okay, yeah, but I, I think that would be helpful even through a training program to make them aware that it does exist, even if you don't have the exact date, to be able to tell them to be watching for that.
It was August 11th of last year, and it looks as though we typically do it in August, but yeah, we can connect you with Shannon.
Yeah, I could, I'll certainly mention that that takes.
And even maybe with, during the summer, when you're on your radio programs, that might be something worthwhile, because it's, it's an opportunity for them to have a place to take those unused pesticides.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No questions, just want to comment on the tenant. Several of your spring meetings or January meetings, you've held a legion, and there's good information given out there, and good attendance there, and lots of good questions from the people there, so it's a good meeting that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work. You do a great job representing throughout the county. Anything else? All right.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, item 23 today is our committee reports.
Last week, I attended the extension meeting, and since we just heard a whole lot from them, I'll, I'll keep that pretty short. We did have some reports from the different programs. 4H noted that their after-school programs have proved to be a really strong delivery method for 4H programs. They did four with three school districts last year, an engineering structures program for fifth and sixth graders at Moorhead and Holly, a Lego club in Barnesville for third through sixth graders, and a program called Electrify Your World for grades one through four in Moorhead. That one was really popular, and so there's more of those to come that are scheduled in January and February. We also discussed the process for performance reviews for extension staff, and the farm family awards. There are three farm awards that are given out, the U of M Farm Family, the Red River Valley Outstanding Farm Leader, and Harvest Bowl. So we just talked about the process for those and selection criteria, and took a look at previous winners as well. Then on the 15th, I attended our Clay County Suicide and Substance Abuse Prevention We had Karen Pfeifer from Creating Community Consulting attend to talk about a recovery village development partner opportunity. So the city of Moorhead and Resilient Moorhead are taking a look at potentially putting in a small home kind of community within our community for folks that are trying to live in recovery. So there would be resources available for those experiencing substance use disorder on-site there, supportive services, and also just, yeah, just to be a part of a neighborhood of folks going through similar things to support each other in that process. So a tiny home situation. They're looking at a lot of model villages around the U.S. The one in particular that they are really interested in is called Community First Village in Glimmer. It's glimmeraustin.org if you wanted to peek at that later, to kind of see what model they're looking at. She also shared a survey, and I forwarded an email to Jackie that she can send out to the commissioners with more information on those surveys and that project. Neemal talked about a youth summit that she has planned for kids. It's been rescheduled a couple times, I did report on that previously, but around 40 people attended, and they looked at mental health and navigating, mental health and family challenges for youth, and they also incorporated meditation, yoga, dance, and sharing a meal to make sure it was fun, an expression of their culture. It was primarily Sudanese youth that attended that. And we also looked at the final version of the Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition's vision and mission statements. The vision they landed on was, "We envision a county where we work together to provide hope and health through suicide and substance prevention. We're committed to inclusion, equity, and compassion." And the mission statement is "To empower our community to prevent suicide and substance use." Last thing I wanted to report is today at 3:00 PM, the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council is meeting in the Family Service Center, and we're going to have a discussion on housing in Clay County, and just an open discussion on some of the challenges that a lot of folks with mental illness face, and then they hope to take some of that data from that conversation to present in May, when they give their annual presentation to the board. So there'll be topical discussions like that coming up over the next few months, so this one is about housing, and there'll be more to add data to that report. That concludes my reports, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, last Wednesday morning, attended the Wild Rise Water Check Board meeting, and I think they can put down as the record for the shortest meeting they've ever held in the last 10 years I've been attending those meetings, so it's in the running anyway for a short meeting, but they went over the permits and complaints, which there was no, no questions on them, they were all approved. They talked about Goose Prairie Project that they're putting in a dam and stuff. It's a $1.3 million project, and so far, they've paid them $920,000 of, of the project, and so it's just about completed, and they commented there's very nice work being done on there. They're talking about petition to outlet in Clay County, the ditch 18. There's a request from a farmer to put some of his drainage into ditch 18, so they're going to look at the assessment area and the drainage area, and there'll be a hearing set up at the next meeting in, in January. Talked about leasing of agricultural land, they plan and plan, and then add to lease out some of their land that they own. Staff benefits, they had a COLA increase and added one federal holiday, and also, they're talking about ring dykes that they're, or not. And also, they're talking about ring dykes that they're, or not maintaining township road to be able to get to some property that they own that they can't get to. There's no road getting to it. And so they're working on getting a township road maintained to get to their property. That was it on that meeting. Friday, I attended the Shack Meeting, about a four-hour meeting. They talked about their goals for the coming year. Budget, they discussed disparities, health threats, health starts, healthy program and policy proposals. They said as far as COVID, more people are in hospitals because there's no long-term care to put them in after they get out or should be released from the hospital. There's nowhere for them to go to be taken care of. They had election of officers that changed, they changed the terms of the officers from one year to two-year. Also, Chan Malcolm sort of was recognized for years of service as she signed or retired from Commissioner of Health, and she gave her goodbye speech or whatever, and congratulated or praised for many hours of work. That's my two meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. On December 15th, we had a Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting. It was rather a short meeting. It was, attendance was impacted by the weather. We had some attend remotely. We got a landfill activities update from Brett Rice. And probably the most encouraging news we heard on that whole deal is that the heater is now working within the facility, and it's working good, which is, we've been waiting a long time for that. We received an update on other solid waste issues with Cory Banger, including some discussion on transition planning for when we move from the old transfer station to the new one. We did not have a PRAM update, and we, because that meeting was postponed until next week. That same day, we also had the Moritz Clay County Joint Powers, MCC JPA Meeting. And we did have some discussion about the Southern Embankment Design and Right-of-Way Issues. That'll be coming up in the future. The Southern Embankment, it's referred to on the Minnesota side, there's Reach Four, which is the tieback levee that goes north and south and kind of follows along Highway 75. And then there's Reach Five, which is helping with their county road on the county line. Is that, Commissioner Moser, what's the county highway number? Anyway, it's the county highway.
Sorry, I don't have it on the, I can.
I'm just at a loss right now for the numbers. But anyway, so we had some discussions about those right-of-way needs coming up in the future and the process in obtaining those. We did approve a housing differential payment for one property and also an appraisal waiver. And then we updated some land agent contracts that had expired and going forward for the next three years. And that include a contract action for ProSource, SRF, and Patchen, and also Crown appraisal. One of Crown Appraisals was also approved.
Hundred and Eightieth Avenue South.
There you go. I think.
Fifty.
Fifty? Yeah, County Road 50? Yeah, there you go. That's what it is, yeah. Thank you. And then, then we also had a diversion authority meeting that afternoon, and that, there was really nothing of consequence. We got some updates on calendar issues and things of that nature. Maybe Dave will want to add to that. Then also, we did meet yesterday with Commissioner Ebinger and I, and Steve did meet with the folks from the Diversion Authority in terms of planning out legislative priorities for the diversion project moving forward. And so, you know, we discussed the issues and all the projects that are important, and they're going to be, have dollars tied to them that are going to be happening on the Minnesota side of the river. And so we wanted, and so now I think Commissioner Ebinger and I are also going to meet with the city tomorrow, and with the idea in mind that we want to work together in establishing a list of priorities, because the city also still has a significant amount of funds needed to finish their internal project. So we want to be on the same page in terms of how we move forward with requesting assistance from the state on those projects. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the fourteenth, I attended the, virtually attended Northwest Emergency Communication Board Meeting. Had a pretty comprehensive discussion on the grants training that's available through their funding for this region. On a closer to home note, we had an approval for Cass County, North Dakota. They are participant in ARMOUR because of the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. And we, they were included in ARMOUR system, the Minnesota system, several years ago. They need to increase the number of radios that they are currently using because of inclusion of radios on the ARMOUR system in their schools and with rural fire. So we increased their radios by eighteen hundred radios, eighty-two talk groups. Wasn't an increase in the talk groups, but they would include those talk groups. So they have total twenty-eight hundred total radios now. The expense for this expansion was totally borne by Cass County. It did, however, broaden some of the technical ability for the ARMOUR system by including that. On the fifteenth, I attended the Greater Park of Morehead EDC Annual Meeting. We approved the appointments for Clay County Representatives. I'll continue to serve on the Executive Board. And Commissioner-elect Krabbenhoff will be on the board. We had a long discussion on proposals for Fueling Our Future Point O Two. I think probably the bottom line on it, after looking at a number of options, is that it was decided they're going to have a year to clearly identify what the scope and the services they have are, and to generate enough interest in those services to fund themselves. And as it stands now, December 31st, if they are not operative, December 31st of next year, they will cease to exist. So there was, there was much more to the discussion, but a lot of that has to do with some of the funding mechanisms that North Dakota has that we don't have on this side. But there was a vote to go ahead and give them a one-year opportunity to meet some On the nineteenth, I attended the Diversion Authority Board Meeting. Commissioner Campbell covered that pretty well. We did approve a final budget, cash budget of $193 million. No, I'm sorry, $213 million in the final draft. And then the meeting yesterday with Diversion Authority folks, Paul Bartel, myself, Commissioner Campbell, Joel Paulson, and John Shockley. And we're, again, discussing our priorities. We're going to try and identify shared priorities with Mor Ed tomorrow and get ready to go to the legislature and try and get some funding on this side of the river. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Last week, I also attended the Clay County Extension Committee Meeting. That's been reported quite well today. I tuned in to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. That was challenging because so many of us had called in virtually, but thankfully did make it through and agreed. It was nice to have some good news on that boiler. I attended the MCC JPA Meeting that day as well. Did, as noted, talk about the Southern Embankment Design. It's nice to have the official design back. I know there was some, some questions from landowners because they were waiting on that specifically, so that answer should be forwarded to them soon. Hopeful that will be helpful in mitigation. Had the land agent reports and then did agree or take action on the contracts. That afternoon, I attended the MetroCog Committee Meeting. We did have a lot of year-end reports. We did agree to the Transit Selection Grant that they'd had out there and the 2023, 2024 North Dakota DOT MPO contracts. We did have a staff promotion because Ari De Rosario had completed his Associate Planner Certification. That's great to have that. Did talk about a potential electric vehicle readiness study. That's something that, because of the conversations that are happening nationwide and certainly in different states, wanted to study any needs there. If any jurisdictions decide to go forward with that, having that in place would be beneficial. And then did have a couple amendments to the UPWP and Transportation Improvement Programs. Did approve those. And then yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Committee Meeting. We did have reports for the centers and the collaboratives. Did talk about the access indicators. Access continues to be good. Unfortunately, they did have a very sad, unexpected death of a provider at one of the facilities. So there is some access delays because of that. But certainly, our hearts go out to the family and coworkers because that was very sad. Had administrative updates from Executive Director Baker and the CFO, Tom Mizlowski. The Morehead Clinic, as I've reported before, is expanding. It's been going very well. However, recently, their guaranteed maximum price cannot be honored because of the price increases for steel. A lot of people were alarmed at that, but many counties were able to state that that's kind of the new norm because of pandemic-related supply chain issues. So hopeful that it won't be too large of an increase. And then had updates on the Minnesota legislation items that they'll, their MACO will be, not MACO, that's yours, their association will be pushing forward to continue the work when it unfortunately costs a lot more these days to provide the services. And I believe that concludes my reports.
And I got one.
Yes.
And one question on the agenda. I thought we were going to work on the Wild Rice, not Wild Rice, Buffalo Watershed Director. Is that in next week's?
That will be on next week's agenda. Yeah, it needs to be on the agenda, but because today's was such a large, we have to take action by next week, so we can do that.
Okay, and we have to get it done before January.
Do that on the 27th.
Yep.
That's correct.
Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Wednesday, we had county management. We discussed many of the HR end-of-the-year items that were addressed here today at Board. We talked about the management retreat for next year. We also got project updates from Joe in regards to campus items. After that training, our department heads sat through civics, civic clerk training, our new agenda, Agenda Item System that will go into effect on January 3rd. And so there's two different opportunities to participate in that training. On the fourteenth, also met with Darren and our Labor Attorney, Josh Hagman, in regards to our unions, some of which were before the Board today. And again, just want to kind of reiterate the Board's comments earlier and thanking Darren for the work he's done, both in the labor negotiations and also the merit system. That's, it's been a big undertaking, and he's done a real great job with that. So thanks, Darren. Participated in the SWAC on the fifteenth. That's been addressed. Also met with Sheriff Empting on a series of Sheriff's Department issues, and also participated in the MCC JPA Meeting that's been well-covered. On the nineteenth, participated in the meeting with Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Campbell in regards to legislative funding for the diversion. Just would note, we did receive notification last Friday that we did receive our Jansen settlement of $271,712 for the opioid settlement. We also received our second payment from the distributors of $71,065, which brings our fall payments to just right around $400,000 of our 1.9 million that we were allotted to receive over eighteen years. We did receive notification this week from AMC that there are, that all five remaining opioid settlement agreements have been agreed to, that we will be receiving additional information in the first quarter of this year, but that could mean another $100 million for the state of Minnesota. Just to put that in perspective, the Jansen, the Jansen settlement was about $222,000, so roughly half of that. So that, we'll know more about how that will be paid out and over what timeframe here later. Also, just wanted to point out during the meeting, it was, was mentioned that City Mor Ed did receive $26.3 million in federal grant. Mayor Carlson wanted to extend her appreciation for this Board's support and letters of support over and over and over to receive that. And so, final thing is just a note for our public, we will be closed December 26th, next Monday, in observance of the Christmas holiday. And that concludes my report.
Any further items? Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.